Welcome everyone to the Kent City Council Workshop. Today is Tuesday, November 16th, 2021. We've got two items on our agenda. So let's go ahead and get started with the first item, which is our Parks Capital Projects Update.
Hello. Good evening, Council President, Mayor, and the rest of the council. Terry Youngman, Park Planning and Development Manager for the Kent Parks Department, and thanks for having me tonight. Tonight, I'm going to be presenting the 2022 Parks Capital Update. Really, the presentation's kind of broken into two parts. First half is going to be our accomplishments. It covers two years, 2020 and 2021, because we sort of entered a time vortex in the last two years, so covering a little bit more time with the accomplishments. But then, as we look ahead into 2022 and 2023, we'll be talking about the projects we have upcoming, which is an exciting work plan, no doubt. So, some of our accomplishments. We'll start with the big one, West Fenwick Park. This is a project that we were very happy to celebrate, really a substantial investment for the Kent Parks Department, you know, a four million dollar approximate construction project. So it really represents kind of the realization of a lot of the work from the 2016 Parks and Open Space Plan and realizing some of these big investments that we were talking about through the context of that plan. So with this aerial, you can kind of see some of the improvements, the iconic shoots and, or slides and climbers playground that has been a huge success, the lawn area that is surrounded by pollinator gardens, the new footsall court that's dedicated to Officer Moreno, and the dedication ceremony that we had there was really a good event, and then the picnic shelter and the small lawn space that supports the playground. And so, it was a project we're very proud of, and I think is a sign of things to come from our division, you know, really represents this move towards larger, more comprehensive, holistic types of projects. Just some dates on this. We had a soft opening for this project in April 23rd of 2021, and then we celebrated our grand opening with a larger event on August 11th, 2021. Also, I'll stop and say, it's a pretty big presentation, so please feel free to stop me at any point. If you have questions about any of these individual projects, I'm happy to answer them. Don't feel like you've got to wait till the very end. Next project we wanted to talk about was a small totlot renovation at Quantis III. This is in the Scenic Hill neighborhood. This is a project that we did in collaboration with our park operations team. They have some in-house construction crews that we work with, I would say about once a year, on some of these smaller scale projects where it doesn't make a lot of sense to go through a full bid process, and that tighter coordination with our teams helps us kind of save some funding on some of these projects and really get a better finished product out of it. This is a project we're very proud of as well. This is an old playground that reached its useful life. We went through the process of engaging with the community to replace the playground. We also added some interesting elements. There's, this is kind of our first step into nature play, so we've kind of done a small nature play installation of this site. If you haven't seen it, I encourage you to go and visit it, because I think you'll see more of these things popping up in our park system as we look to include things like natural logs and boulders, in addition to some of the more traditional play elements. So we completed this project in October of 2020 with a ribbon cutting ceremony, and the mayor actually joined us for that ribbon cutting and a livestream to Facebook.
Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Madam President. So, could you tell me where Lot 3 is, Quantis Lot?
Yeah, so it would be between Chicago Street and Guyverston.
Okay, yeah, but East Hill, I know where it is. Okay, thank you.
Right in the heart of Scenic Hill.
Yep.
Another project that we're really proud of as a Parks Department, you know, we've been supporting our Public Works Department, collaborating with them on the Fourth and Willis Roundabout project. Public Works obviously very much responsible for all the transportation-related components, but Parks Department was brought in to assist with landscape design, some of the more urban place-making elements that you see here at the center of the roundabout. You know, we were very happy to see this project come to fruition. Now, we're sort of transitioning into the two greenway spaces, which we'll talk about here in a few minutes, but just wanted to highlight this as a project that, you know, it's an opportunity for us to work tightly with our Public Works Department for a more polished finished product at the end of the day. So this grand opening occurred on April 7th, 2021. We're chipping away at our landscape gateways in the industrial valley. So this year, we completed the 228th Street Gateway Project. This was a project that we contracted out. The previous one that we did was at 212th. We completed that back in fall of 2019, so we have one left, which is at 196th, and that's one upcoming next year that we hope to accomplish. So we're kind of doing one of these per year until we get through all of them. Another small project, but a significant one in my mind, because this is a project that's called out specifically within the 2016 plan. So it's one of the priority projects of the Parks and Open Space Plan to add a loop trail around Service Club ballfields. So again, we did this in collaboration with our park operations team to install a quarter minus compacted gravel trail around the, around the facility that ties in with sidewalks on the west side and the south side. And again, there's a lot of efficiency gained when we can do these projects with our in-house crews as their time allows, because it really allows us to do the projects more efficiently and at a better cost for the city. One more example here of a collaboration with our internal operations team, another project that was also called out in the 2016 Parks and Open Space Plan, we installed a new shelter at the Wilson Play Field. It's a project that in Park Planning and Development, we purchased the equipment, so pre-engineered structure that we moved through the permitting process and installed here at Wilson, and then our operations teams helped us install the tables and benches that you see here. So this is a facility that supports both the playground, that's right adjacent to it, just right off-screen here, and then also supports all the programming of the fields there that you see in the background. This one's hot off the press, the Mendel Property Acquisition. We actually closed on this property last week, so that's, if you'll recall, this is a $900,000 acquisition. Half of that funding's coming from Conservation Futures. We were not successful last year in the RCO grant application, but we are going to be submitting for this one again in the upcoming grant cycle, so that would then complete the full funding for it, so our city's not really paying anything out of pocket for this property acquisition. This is an important property for Mill Creek Canyon, because this allows us to establish a trailhead on the southeast end. So if, you know, looking forward into the future, Mill Creek Canyon Master Plan Update and looking into those improvements, Earthworks would be our trailhead at the, at the bottom of the canyon, and then up at the top, Mendel Property, combined with the Ransom Property, would give us that trailhead access on the southeast end, so you would have anchored facility on both ends, good access in and out of the canyon. So this is something we'll explore more in the upcoming Mill Creek Canyon Master Plan Update. Speaking of Mill Creek Canyon, we've also been working on trail repairs. This is an exciting project, actually, a couple of council members have joined me in the canyon for a tour of some of the most recent work, and something we're really proud of as a department, because it's taking a facility that had reached a state of, that was unsustainable for the facilities that we had there. So now, we went through this cleanup effort, it was presented, one of the last times that I was here at council, and now we're working with Earth Corps, who is a regional expert in trail building and trail stewardship. You can see two of their crew members here, and so they're moving through a process of marching up the canyon, doing vegetation clearing, re-establishing the tread, and building structures in certain places where these trails were sloughing off the slope, or there were steep slopes that we needed to stabilize. So we just completed the Phase 1 of the trail repair, which really goes from Earthworks Park up to the American Legion Hall, and the next phase will kick off in the spring of 2022. Well, we'll be calling that Phase 2. That would then go from the American Legion Hall up to 97th. We'll get as far as we can with the time that Earth Corps can give to us, and then we'll just kind of keep marching up the corridor until we can complete all of the repair work to the existing trail system there. So really exciting work, and it's a great collaboration with that team. Riverman Driving Range, this is a project that's been going on for a couple of years now, going back to the Phase 1, which was the landscape renovation project. That covered the regrading, the drainage, irrigation, landscape, and reconfiguration of the exterior net system to accommodate 14 additional stalls. That portion of work, which we're calling Phase 1, was completed in June of 2020. Then Phase 2, which is a combined project with Public Works, excuse me, in our golf division, to expand the parking lot. That project was completed in May of 2021. Combined with that project was the meet-me-on meager frontage improvements as well, so those two were, projects were combined, dealing with the frontage and dealing with the changes to the, the parking configuration. And then Phase 3 wrapped up most recently in September of 2020. That was the actual expansion of the building itself, adding 13 additional stalls. I will say, since this facility is opened, there are always people there hitting balls. It's, I would say it is very much a success. We're hearing from, from Pete that, you know, there's users there all the time, and it's a good investment for the city. It's really a project that we're proud of and an opportunity to collaborate again with Public Works in our internal golf division. So that covers our accomplishments. I'll pause there for a second, just see if there's any questions before I move on to our work plan. Okay, great. So first project we'll talk about is the Carson Park Redevelopment Project. This is one you all are probably familiar with, as we've presented to council once or twice before. So, this is the downtown park, and it is going to be a complete park renovation. So really, the character of this park is going to change completely. It's a park that has very little recreational value today, and what we're adding here is going to really change how much, how much recreational value we bring to downtown Kent. So this is where the Lunar Rover and the Astronaut that we currently own will eventually be located. In addition to that, we're building two companion pieces to this, the Lunar Lander, which is that structure that you see in light gray with the four gray footers and the orange slide. That's going to be a children's play element that will have a connection to the piece to the left of it, which is a mission control piece. So there'll be a communication between those pieces. You can imagine kids inside the Lunar Lander actually talking to kids at the mission control table and, you know, punching buttons and seeing the lights light up. So it's really a fun experiential play piece that I think is going to bring some vibrancy to what was really a tired park space downtown. Some, there's some additional elements to the project, you know, we're expanding the lawn space, creating some more flexible downtown green space. There's a projector that we're looking at, some interesting programming that can be done on the wall, either art programming or movies in the park and that sort of thing. We're under design on this project right now. We're actually in for our pre-application here in the next several weeks to move into permitting with the idea that we'd be under construction in the summer of 2022. The funding for this project is coming from Parks Capital. Obviously, we have a fundraising campaign that's going on in coordination with our Economic Community Development Department, so that's something we're tracking very closely as well. And again, you know, project schedule is contingent upon our permitting and that fundraising campaign.
Councilmember Michelle.
Thank you, Council President. Terry, what is the, I can't read it, it says lighting, something lighting, and then there's like the yellow-black dashed line? What is that?
So that was actually from the original conceptual dine, that design. That's catenary lighting, that's something we're actually going to take out of the project, because I think for how we're moving forward with the design of the project, it actually makes more sense to do some more traditional lighting, so that would be like pedestrian-scale lighting. It'll actually illuminate the park better than catenary lighting was. Catenary lighting is like what you see in front of the YMCA, so it's the bulb light, string lights. So we're kind of getting away from that. It didn't actually mesh that well with the space-themed park, so we're going to move towards something that has a little bit more of a futuristic look to it, the actual lighting element would.
Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Madam President. Terry, I don't know if, are those red bricks there, those circles? You're using red bricks?
Yeah, those are actually pavers. Those are hexagonal pavers that we're going to be installing there.
Are you familiar with some of the history of this area?
I know the history of the park and its status with our sister city in Ukraine, and that's, yeah.
And we used to have, on the wall of the building here, as you can see that up at the very right-hand corner, that was a big Ukrainian, it was a Russian mural there. And since that time and the red bricks, we've always called that, I don't know, Mayor, if you can remember, we always addressed that as Red Square. And now you've got the red bricks still in there, so it may continue.
That's completely coincidental, I must say. Yeah, actually, the bricks that we're looking at are going to be more of a gray color, so I think this is just showing in the rendering.
A square.
That's great history to have.
Ukraine. Thank you very much.
Panther Lake Community Park Master Plan, this is another really exciting project for our division and for our department. When you think about the city and how it's served, and you look at the 2016 plan, and just some foreshadowing about the upcoming 2022, Parks and Open Space Plan, Panther Lake is probably the most underserved area of the city from a parks and recreation perspective. So this is a really important project for us. The catalyst for this project was really the state funding that was awarded, so we got $2 million through the Department of Commerce, through State of Washington, and so that was really what kickstarted this project. Now, we're bringing some additional funding to the table through ARPA, Parks Capital, this is a no-brainer when we think about future RCO grant applications. So, we just kickstarted the RFQ process that actually hit the streets last Friday, and we've had a tremendous turnout, even in just the course of a week. We've got great consultants that are filing intent to submit for this RFQ, so we're really excited to see that process move forward. You know, hard to commit to any timelines beyond that planning and design process, because you never really know how long engagement's going to last, and planning, and so forth. So right now, we're just saying, we're going to be under planning and design in 2022. We've got to get into permitting and understand conditional use permit, and, you know, how much regulatory process we're going to move through in order to accomplish that project, but certainly an exciting one to bring a new community park to the Panther Lake neighborhood. Community Gardens Relocation, this one may come as news to some. Our current site where the community gardens is located is actually under a longstanding agreement with the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints. They informed us about a year ago that they would be selling that property, and that we would need to find a new location for the community garden. So since receiving that news, we have been looking for a good location. The, the church has been so kind to allow us one additional year at that site, so we will have one more community garden year in 2022, and then we will be moving the community garden, what we're currently proposing is Commons Neighborhood Park, so that's just north of the Showware Center. It's a great site, it's flat, we've had geotechnical analysis on it, soils look good, it has parking, which we can reach an agreement with Showware Center, there's a water meter nearby, so everything's kind of lined up just perfectly, that that seems like a good location where we could move our community gardens program. This is a project that we're likely going to do in-house, because we do think there's some efficiency gained by being able to work more collaboratively through the design and construction process. So we're going to be in design on this in the fall and winter of 2021, and then working towards construction in '22, so that we're ready for that 2023 community gardens season. Fourth and Willis Greenways, I hinted at this project earlier on, so this is the continuation of the Roundabout Project, with the two pieces of land, both north and south of Willis, being transferred to the city from the state, from Washdott. That opens an opportunity to activate these spaces as more of a park setting, rather than using them strictly for transportation purposes. So this is a shot of our project in progress. We're, we're well under construction at this point. Scope of work included in this project, one of the most important pieces of that would be the trail connection from the inner urban trail to the center of the roundabout, with plans to eventually connect that through to downtown Kent Station and beyond eventually, stuff that we're working with our transportation department on. Some of the other pieces of this that are of note is the, some of the plaza spaces and nodes that we're putting on the south side, the gravel trail connection on the south side for some of the more day-use opportunities for the residents that live on the south side of the greenways, so seeing that as a park space that serves those residents that live on that side. But on the north side, we have a small loop trail that we're going to be putting in that allows residents that live in the senior housing nearby have a place to walk, rather than just walking, we were seeing them just walk back and forth on the single path that we had there, so we said, well, let's give them a loop that adds some interest to that experience. We're under construction on this project now. Weather has been a challenge, we always knew that, but we wanted to proceed with it anyways. So they've made good progress, and actually, this week, you're seeing concrete go down out there, so some of those plaza spaces are coming together, if you want to drive by and go take a look at them. With the idea that we're going to be wrapping up on this project, really, it's going to be end of 2022 by the time we're finishing this. We want to wait to put landscape down in March, rather than trying to do it in the middle of winter. Springwood Park Reimagining, this is another really exciting project. We started the planning effort for this earlier this year, complete revisioning of what Springwood Park is, you know, really taking the opportunity to step back, look at what's successful about this park today, you know, highlight that, make it improve, and then bring some, breathe some new life into the park. We've had a really successful planning process so far. We've had over 200 different touchpoints with the community, we've been having pop-up events in the parks, where we can actually intercept people as they're walking through or using the playground, which has been really successful to have those in-person conversations. I think people are eager to meet with us and talk to us about the park and give us feedback, which has been great. We've had over 1,300 comments delivered to us, either through our boards that we had in the park or online surveys, so that's really encouraging to have that level of participation back. And then we've been doing some direct engagement with community-based organizations. We've met with nine different CBOs around this project, getting them to work with their constituents to bring their, their opinions and their thoughts to the table about how this park should be redeveloped. So we've done round one of engagement, now we're moving into round two, where we've got two conceptual designs that we're going to be presenting for folks to give us additional feedback on, and then once we have feedback on that, we're going to be moving toward a final concept design that we would then be bringing forward for people to consider as the final. The idea is that we would be under design next year, construction in 2023. Project's currently funded through Parks Capital, but this is again, a project that will be an absolute slam dunk when it comes to an RCO grant process. You know, with the level of attention paid to it through the engagement process, and the level of diversity that we see with the surrounding communities, this is a project that we, will be very much an emphasis for us in RCO in the next year. Salter Vista Park, this is another neighborhood park renovation project that is carrying a heavy load for the department. So this is a park that's on the west hill. It is serving an area of Kent that is, is underserved when you look at other areas of Kent. The recreational value of that park today is very, very low. This project will bring that recreational value up to where it should be, according to our standards that we set in the 2016 Parks and Open Space Plan. So replacing the playground, dealing with some drainage and stormwater issues that we've identified in Public Works has been great, and helping us navigate some of those issues, adding some nature-based play and trail elements there in the woods that you kind of see off to the right-hand side, away from the formal play area. That trail connection is actually really important, because just on the other side of that, to the right, is some multifamily apartments that get access to the park through the woods. So it's really important that we take the time to make those trail access more formal and easier to get to and through to the park without having to get into your car. We've been under design on this project, we're into permitting now. The idea that we're, is going to be under construction in 2022. Just recently, King County opened up a grants program, they're calling the King County Parks Capital and Open Space Grant, so we submitted for this project, and we should hear back in the next couple of months whether or not we're going to be successful for this one. Similarly, Morrel Meadows Park Phase 2, this is a continuation of the work that was started with the YMCA project, so we did a lot of park improvements as part of the YMCA project, but we didn't take care of everything. So this picks up where that project left off, really primarily dealing with the playground, that was the one piece that was remaining that didn't fit with all the other elements. You'll see here in the concept design that we've actually are moving the playground, reconfiguring the footprint, and actually making it more of a destination playground, whereas I think before it was more of a neighborhood park scale. So really, with combining East Hill and Morrel Meadows into one park and adding the YMCA facility, it makes sense that this becomes a bigger, more iconic, more important playground for the department. So, we're working on the design right, right now. We'll be meeting with the community, doing our community engagement after the first of the year. We'll be working in collaboration with the YMCA on that engagement process. Same kind of timeline, this one's a little bit harder to predict, because we don't know what permitting it is going to say on it, it could add some additional time. But right now, we're hoping that we can be under construction in '22. This one's funded primarily through Parks Capital, but we submitted this project as well through that same King County Parks Capital and Open Space Grant program. We should hear soon on that. Green River Levy. This is the Lower Russell Levy Project, but we're calling it Van Doren's Landing because that's what's most important to us in the Parks Department. So this is really Phase Two of the Levy Project. This is the movement of Van Doren's from the space that you see on the right, which is now all occupied with flood infrastructure, and moving it across formerly Russell Road into this new space. We are seeing that the construction schedule is showing that this project would have all the park elements built in 2022. So it's going to be a really busy year for us. Kind of similar to the YMCA project. We're not in the management seat on this one, but obviously, we have a seat at the table and are guiding how those park improvements are built. So we'll be keeping tabs on this project very closely. This is going to be a really important project to complete for us. And I think one that we haven't really talked a lot about, it's kind of happening in the background, but I think there's some really cool elements that are being built in here. The Mount Rainier themed playground is a piece that I think will, people will be talking about similarly to the way they talk about the Slides and Climbers Playground. There's a zip line element that's included here. There's a new pickleball court, which is actually really important because that's one of the things we hear the most from the community is they want more and more pickleballs. So we're actually getting a court in here, which is really important, and a wiffle ball field and some other elements as well. So like I said, construction shows these to be built in '22 with the idea that at the end of '22, that this would be open to the public. Another levy project that we're working on is the Signature Point Levy. This one is very early in the design process. Hard to commit to any dates on this, but this stretch moves from the driving range, as you can see, along the Green River through the Signature Point Apartments and then ends at Washington Avenue. It's about a one and a half mile stretch of the river. It's a really beautiful stretch of the Green River Trail. It's probably one of the best stretches of Green River Trail that we have in our system today. It's a beautiful landscape. It's got flat lawn spaces that feed into the Signature Point Apartments. So access for residents onto the trail is sort of seamless. There's no barriers, big mature trees. So you can imagine it is a very beautiful setting. And the levy project is really going to change the character of that. So for us as a Parks Department, we've been tracking this project really closely to say that whatever impacts are caused by the levy, we want to make sure that we're documenting and keeping note and requesting mitigation for the impacts of that recreation. So that's something we're working on very closely with the Flood Control District and with Public Works to make sure that these four points that we've penciled in here are the recreational elements that we would like to see built as part of that project to make sure that there's still good access to parks and recreation at the end of this project. We're in 30% design right now. Again, coordinated effort with Flood Control District, Public Works, and our, us and Parks Department working on it as well. So that covers the big projects. There's other work happening as well, but there's kind of smaller projects, things that we're just going to get done. Again, talking about some of the coordination projects that we do with our operations team, there's actually some really exciting work coming up. One of those is, we've been working with Public Works on an overlay project on 248th that actually helps us fill a gap on Clark Lake. So with that piece done and the walkway included on that that's separated from the road and us filling the gap of the gravel trail on both west and east, we're actually going to complete the loop around Clark Lake, which has always been a missing link. So this is a really exciting project. People will actually be able to go and walk a full loop around Clark Lake that's protected. They don't have to spend any time on a road competing with cars. So thanks to Public Works for helping us get there on that project. Garrison Creek Park Playground Placement. That's just a playground that's reached its useful life. We need to pop that one out. We need to get a new one in. So we'll be engaging with the community on that. West Fenwick Tennis Court Repair. That's kind of one of the remaining elements that needs to be dealt with. At West Fenwick, there's a big crack that needs to be repaired. So we're going to be taking care of that with our operations team. We're also working really closely with operations on all the improvements that we're doing in Mill Creek Canyon. So, you know, as part of this, EarthCore is producing essentially a playbook of the different things that they build and different treatments that they apply to nature trails to build a sustainable trail system. So we're working to document all this stuff so that, and bringing our operations team in, into the process so that they can understand how these things are built and can maintain them long-term. And then another small project that we're working on is the Titus Railroad Park Renovation. So that's a small project that's there at the end of First Avenue, next to the Kenyon Restaurant. There's some maintenance issues that our teams have been dealing with long-term. Really, this project is about dealing with those maintenance issues, but also creating a new plaza space for outdoor picnicking and seating that just adds a little bit of interest to the park. So we're going to be taking that plaza space out, redesigning it, bringing a new in, adding some landscape planting and some interesting seat elements. So keep your eye on that park in the next few months. You're going to see a pop of color that comes into that park that's really going to add some interest there.
Councilmember Boyce.
Terry, Clark Lake. I know I drove by the other day. So the house that was there, I think in a couple of hours, we bought that land, right? So just an open space there. Are we going to do anything with that? Just going to leave it like it is? And I'm not too sure, the house with the right, Bill Ruth used to say, is that's, that's part of Kent space as well too, or he still own that?
No, the Ruths still own that property. Yes, sir. The properties adjacent, those are ours. So we did purchase those and since demoed those houses. For now, I think you'll see those kind of stay the way that they are, just sort of a natural prairie setting, let them be. We need to do a master plan for Clark Lake to really create a vision for what that entire space is going to be. That upside is really the only opportunity we have for any formal park development. So if we're going to do any sort of state park use or parking expansion or, you know, big ideas like if there's some sort of nature center that we would want to do there, that's where you would do it. So we need to kind of preserve that and not touch it for now until we understand holistically what we're going to do with Clark Lake. And then I think we start to explore it. Now we've got some opportunities. Let's see what we can do.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Madam President. So Terry, there's open space on 132nd between 256 and Kent Kangley. And is that a large enough space to put your nursery up there?
Yeah, I'm not sure. What nursery are you referring to?
Or the one you're talking about replanting?
Oh, the community garden. You know, the problem, I think, with 132nd, I think it would probably be a big enough space just geographically. Does it have enough land? But one of the other things we were looking at is to make sure wherever we're moving the community garden to needs to be in a downtown space, close to transit, you know, close to the residents who are using it in all the multifamily complexes. We really didn't want to depart too far from where that existing facility was.
Makes sense. So do you have future plans for that space, that open space?
At 132nd?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's something we want to explore in the upcoming 2022 Parks and Open Space Plan. I think what we're going to see is some mapping that helps us identify priorities. And then from those priorities, start to work on more discrete plans for some of these park spaces that have been kind of left behind in recent years.
Six ball fields?
Not sure it's big enough for those, but yeah. EngageKempParks.com. I don't want to spend a ton of time on this slide, but I just want to celebrate the launch of something the department has really needed and I think is showing some early signs of success. With COVID, we've really had to transition to almost exclusively online engagement, which has been really frustrating. For someone who's worked in this industry for 10-plus years, you know, I'm really energized by getting into a room and talking with people and waving my hand over a plan. We don't get to do that. It's really hard right now. And so we want to create safe spaces for people to be able to engage with our projects. So that's where EngageKempParks.com came in. We contracted with a company called Bang the Table. The name is a little unfortunate. The platform is great. So it's a web-based engagement platform. There's lots of other cities that are using it. Olympia uses it basically for all of their city initiatives, parks, transportation, everything. Bellevue, Milwaukee, Oregon, Vancouver, V.C. So it's pretty widely used in the region. And it's just a space for engagement. Has all different types of tools, survey tools, interactive maps, discussion boards. We're doing a lot of video presentations on there as part of the Springwood Park Project. So it's a way for us to present material without having to get into a room with people. And we're seeing really good results come back so far. So right now, we've had over 2,500 visitors to the site already and we really have only just launched it and kind of gotten some small projects up on it. In terms of the different visitors, they have classifications for those visitors. Engaged visitors are ones that have actually participated in some of the activities that we have on there. So we have about 500 engaged visitors. Informed visitors are those who've clicked on some material, some piece of information. So we've had, you know, 850 different informed visitors and total registered visitors is 115. So it's a really powerful tool. I encourage you all to go take a look at it. You're going to see lots of different information on there for all the projects that we have. And it really is the clearinghouse for everything that park planning and development is doing as far as projects are concerned. As if we didn't have enough work going on already, we're also taking on our Kent Parks and Open Space Plan. So this is the 2022 to 2027 update of our Open Space Plan. This keeps us current with RCOs so that we can submit for those grant applications. We're currently in the engagement phase. We've been working behind the scenes for several months now, kind of collecting inventory, different documentation, getting our consultants moving on this effort. Right now, we are in the middle of our statistically valid survey. And then we're going to be moving forward with our citywide survey later in November. So be on the lookout for that. It will be a huge push of information out to neighborhoods, big communication campaign to let people know about that process. But that's really the important piece, is to have everybody you know, fill out that survey and tell us what you think about our park system. EngageKempParks.com is going to be a really important resource. Everything's going to be posted through that, on that process. So again, everything will be there. Our current plan is that we would have the first draft of that plan in Q1 of 2022. And then the final draft would be due to the city from the consultants, Q2 of 2022. Got a couple of presentations coming up, Council Workshop and Parks Commission with more details on kind of a middle step on where we are in that process and presenting some of the early results in January. And then the last slide is just kind of talking about some other collaboration opportunities. You know, we do a lot of park projects, but it's not all we do. We take every opportunity that we can to work with other city departments to bring a park's perspective to the table and to create a better product overall where it's useful. So we participated in the Transportation Master Plan. Actually, that took a lot of my time. It was a really worthy effort because I think we ended up with a really good TMP at the end of the day that brings a fresh perspective to how to build out Kent's transportation system moving forward. We've got the comprehensive plan update coming up for ECD. So that's something we'll participate in. Implementation of the Rally the Valley Plan. That's something we're always working on. Collaborating with Public Works on the Meet Me on Meeker Street improvements is really important to us as well because we see that as really part of a continuation of the Kent Valley Loop Trail System. It's an opportunity to create additional loops in the valley. We've actually created an additional loop with the Meet Me on Meeker frontage improvements that we have in front of the Riverbin Driving Range and connecting to the west. Downey Farm Trail and flood improvements, Fourth and Willis Roundabout Project, and then a couple of other levy projects that are in the early planning phases at Milwaukee Two and McCoy. So I'll stop there and I'll take any questions.
Wow, great, thank you, Terry. It's always good to take a look back at our accomplishments over the years. And it really lets us see how much we had, we got done in the past year and a half. So thank you very much for that.
Yeah, thanks.
Lots of things coming up. Lots of things that will actually add a lot of value and recreation to our city and be good for our residents. Councilmember Musho, followed by Core, then Boyce.
Thank you, Council President. Terry, thank you for this presentation. It was really, had a lot of good information in there. I have a question about grants. Are there ever grants for parks for things like safety things?
You know, for not what, from what I've seen, they tend to not be so specific. I think those are things that are always covered under grants, to do lighting or, you know, safety improvements within the park system. I mean, we try and think about that stuff, being inherent to all the projects that we do. I haven't seen anything that would be so specific as that, but it would certainly be covered by any of the grants that we would apply for.
Okay, and then my second question is, if people want to give feedback on any of the plans, the park plans, how do they do that?
EngageKempParks.com.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry, for great information and a reminder on all the amazing work we've accomplished so far. I love to see all, love to see all these parks and our families enjoying them. So it's been great. My question is about the Clark Lake Loop Trail. Do we have a timeline on that sort of?
Yeah, so our, the frontage piece is nearly done. I think they just have to do the vertical separation. So essentially, the extruded curb that would protect pedestrians along the street frontage. It basically goes in front of the Ruths property. And then all we have to do is connect the dots on either the west and the east end. And those are going to be built in-house. So the trail connections through there. And our teams are just sort of scheduling that in in the fall and winter. So that's all to say, I think it's really going to be done in the next two or three months.
Oh, wow, okay. Thank you.
I have a question and a comment. How long you been with the city in the Parks Department?
Three years in January.
Wow, totally impressed. You went through all of that presentation without a note. You know your work. I have to say that. So kudos to you. Very good job, very good job. Thank you.
All right, anyone else have any comments or questions? All right, thank you very much for joining us. Great job. And next up on our agenda, we have the Green River Flood Protection Plan. And joining us via virtually is Mike McTudas. Welcome. Are you going to start it off, Chad?
I'll get started fast. Thanks for having us. I would like to provide an update on levies annually. There's always a lot of work going on on levies. As Terry mentioned, we've had a lot of collaboration with parks and working with the Flood District on moving forward on a number of our initiatives. So Mike will cover all those. As always, he is our expert and I'm excited to have him talking about it. But I'll stand up here and as things come up, I can fill in any blanks. So go ahead, Mike.
Hey, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, great. So Council President, Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you for this opportunity. I'm sorry I can't be there in person, but I really appreciate the opportunity, the flexibility to be able to do this remotely. So I'm going to be giving an update on the Green River, all the things happening on the Green River over the last year or so, plus things coming ahead. There's just a lot of activity going on. And just to reiterate some of the things Terry said and to show that we're on the same page with parks, some of the plans that I'm going to show you in the presentation page with parks, some of the plans that I'm going to show you in the presentation are the exact same one that Terry had in his presentation coincidentally. So we are totally on the same page. So I'm going to be talking about getting overview of the watershed, Howard Hansen Dam, talk about the flood district activities, talk briefly on FEMA. USGS is going to be, we have had a lot of activity with them this year. And then going into the present, the winter forecast, which we all went around last month. We know what it is. And then the flood season preparation and then final habitat. A lot of slides to cover, so I'm going to be moving pretty fast. I can't see if somebody raises their hand. So if you just, if you tell me, I can call us in for questions. So for the watershed overview, I'll talk to the geography, talk about some of the updates on clean water. There's been some, at least one breakthrough this year related to clean water and how we might move forward. So I'll talk through that briefly and then the nature of the season. So Kent is mainly in the lower Green River basin. There's a small piece on the east side, the Lake Meridian and Meridian Valley Creek that goes into Big Sioux, which ends up in the Middle Green. And then the west side of Kent up towards I five goes down into Puget Sound briefly, but most of it is in the lower green, which ends up going into creeks, Mill Creek, Garrison Creek, Springbrook Creek, up flowing north out to the city, combined into Springbrook and just before they get out of the city, right here where the Starbucks roasting facility is, and then flow down to the Black River pump station, which goes into the green, which turns into the Duamish at that point. So talking about water quality, we have, so as I, that the last slide kind of leads into this one, because there is so much stormwater runoff and that goes right into the Green River, right into where the Chinook are and the Coho and the other salmon, clean water is a huge priority. And so we have a lot of activities going on. The update that I was talking about primarily this year was a study done by the University of Washington, which, where they looked at 2,000 chemicals that are present in stormwater typically, trying to find out why Coho are dying within hours of storm events when they're coming upstream. And so they narrowed that down little by little and they got it down to actually one chemical that's in tires. Unfortunately, it's in all tires to protect them from decomposition from ground level ozone. So after the ozone touches a tire, it turns into a chemical called six P P D, quenone, which can kill the Coho very quickly. So that is something that, but fortunately, it's looking like it can be handled with just typical stormwater filtration facilities. So that was a huge breakthrough to find out the effect on some of the species in the Green River and just Pacific Northwest wide. So looking at the entire Green River watershed, we have the Howard, and I'm going to be talking about the Howard Hansen Dam here very shortly. One of the things I wanted to point out was the big project that is going on in the Upper Green is the Fish Passage at the Howard Hansen Dam. There was a presentation on this by the Corps of Engineers at the Y nine Forum this last Thursday, the Water Resource Inventory Area, Salmon Habitat Forum last Thursday, where they gave an update on that and I'll provide some details. But one of the things I wanted to point out was people talk about how the Upper Green River has nearly half of the watershed in it. But if you look at this map, I look at all the tributaries in that area compared to some of the tributaries downstream, the amount of habitat that's going to be available is multiples of what we have today, once we're able to get this fish passage up above the dam, because of all the smaller tributaries that provide additional habitat. So here's a picture of the Howard Hansen Dam. Howard Hansen Dam is fully operational this year. There are no constraints on how much it can hold this year. It did hold water during this last storm event. The inflows into the dam over the weekend touched 10,000 cubic feet per second. And just as a reminder, the levees down in the valley are designed to handle about 12,000 cubic feet per second. So very, we're very happy the dam was there this last weekend. That combined with the lower tributaries was much more than 12,000. So very happy about that. So the downstream fish passage, there were a couple of workshops that happened earlier this year where there were a lot of scientists there, regional scientists, talking about their experience with other dams and how they got fish through them. So they talked about ways to just get them through safely so that you get a high survival rate. The alternative that was narrowed, that it was narrowed down to after the second workshop series was something that they were trying to, where they were trying to avoid a lot of moving parts. So they call it a fixed multiport collector with a steep slope bypass, which basically means it has a lot of doors on it. So wherever the reservoir is, the fish will be able to get into the collector and then go through the red lines on the left side, down through the steep slope, which will go through a new passage under the dam. So that was the resolution. So what the Core is currently doing is preparing a cost estimate so that they can try to get an author, the project authorized with a higher cost estimate in the Water Resources Development Act of 2022. So the goal is to end the requirement from National Marine Fisheries and U S Fish and Wildlife is to have the dam or the fish passage completed by 2030. There's a lot of steps and a lot of construction that need to happen between now and then. So getting this authorized in 2022 is a big step and the Core is working towards updating their cost estimate so they can get that project authorized next year. The Water Resources Development Acts typically come once every two years. And now I'm going to be talking about the King County Flood Control District. We do, we do a significant amount of work in partnership with the King County Flood Control District. A lot of capital projects moving forward are funded either entirely or mainly by the Flood Control District. And then I'll have a short update on the Lower Green River Flood Hazard Management Plan, which is, which is a big step because it will, the proposal is to have this, planning the next work on the Green River for the next 30 to 50 years. So it's a significant document. So going into some of the main projects that the city is working on with the Flood Control District as well as with King County, starting at the Lower Russell Levee, that was something Terry mentioned also, there's been a lot of work on that. This is a drawing that, or a plan that has been shown before to the council. So this is, this has not changed. Construction has been significant over the last couple of years. This picture is from the flood wall that was built last year. This was in 2020. So this is the south end of the project, leading north from Van, sorry, not Van Doren's, from 228th Street or Veterans Way, up around Russell Road, all the way to what we call the P S E Trail and the Green River Natural Resource Area and Nursery. So a couple of things I would point out in this picture is you have Russell Road going along the bank. Once this project is done, Russell Road will be exclusively accessed to the new Van Doren's Park and the Green River Natural Resource Area Nursery. There will be a separate trail along the side of the roadway to be able to separate the pedestrians and bicyclists from the truck, the vehicle traffic. That's something that parks worked very hard to get into this project. This is a newer photo. This is, the drone is approximately at 212th Street looking south. So you can see also the kind of a, where the flood wall ties in going south and then it becomes an earthen levee from the north. So the levee is complete. So we have the 500-year protection for this area with a, with a very much setback levee into the natural resource area, which will also function as a trail for the natural resource area. It'll stay as a gravel trail. And then the Green River Trail will go along the west side of the new Van Doren's Park. And we also have the new habitat channel. And the, the pictures don't really do it justice. If you look at the size of this and the breadth of this project, you look at some of the vehicles, these are big construction vehicles that look like something smaller than toys from this view. But, but this is, a lot of earth has been moved in this project. Here's a couple of photos of the habitat areas that have been built. The photo on the left is the back channel that's in the former Van Doren's Park area. So, and these habitat structures are built to float. So the river comes in as it did this last weekend and these habitat structures will float and you'll be able to get fish habitat underneath them, get them some refuge, as well as just getting out of the river from the high flows. The picture on the right is looking north towards the south 212th Street off in the distance. So these are also some very large habitat structures that also have a, one of the purposes of the logs around them is to hold the habitat structure together, but also to protect kayakers who might come down the river, to keep them from accidentally getting hung up in some of the, of the wood or debris. And then you see some of the rock, which protects the levee from erosion as it curves around towards south 212th Street. And then this is just another picture of the, of the park. One of the things, I won't spend a lot of time on this because as Terry did, but one of the things that I'm particularly excited about is a new observation tower, which is going to be right down near the river. So you'll be able to look over the park, the new habitat back channel, as well as over the river. It'll be some really spectacular views from this observation tower that will be going in next year. Going on to the next project, and Terry also talked somewhat about this one, the Signature Point Levee. Up to this point, the, the Lower Russell Levee has been the biggest project that the Flood Control District has taken on. The Signature Point Levee is going to be a little bit bigger than that. Lower Russell Levee is about 1.4 miles long and just over, it's going to be just over $50 million. And the Signature Point Levee is going to be 1.5 miles long. And it will also be over $50 million, including, and it will be, once the park elements are added, it'll be upwards of about $66 million. Very significant transformation of the river. So the river in Kent, there's about 12 miles of river. And so you're looking at these two projects, which take up nearly three miles of the right bank of a total, total rebuild of the right bank for three miles just within those two projects. So a lot of activity going on and those projects are funded. The, well, Lower Russell, obviously, under construction, completed next year. Signature Point Levee, the Flood Control District just authorized their budget for 2022, which has the funding for Signature Point Levee. So we are moving ahead on that. Terry also used this plan sheet or figure in his presentation. Some of it, he pointed out the recreation areas, which are the circles, the primary recreation areas, the green along the bank are the proposed habitat improvements. So some significant habitat going in right around Signature Point Levee. And we just had our first meeting of the Habitat Work Group yesterday on Monday, which included members from King County, from the Salmon Habitat Forum, as well as from the muckle shoots, to try and get feedback on the best ways to provide that habitat in these areas. It's a very tight space, trying to fit the, we have the trail, the recreation area, the salmon habitat and the flood protection. But we are, I think we're on a good path forward and we've got all the right people talking to give us the best advice of how to fit everything in and how to meet all of the different priorities of the city, as well as like Terry mentioned, maintaining access. We're going to, we're going to put in a flood wall for most of this, just to minimize the space it takes. But we are going to maintain as much access as we can for the Signature Point apartment So this is just another photo. This is the south end of the peninsula and some of the proposed things that are going on there. Maintenance access will be improved on this project for levee maintenance as well as flood patrols, which will also be combined with some of the pedestrian access. So the path forward right now is to finish the Habitat Work Group in the next several months and then prepare the plans, finish the 30% plans, which we are, which are funded by the Flood Control District and start submitting for permits. So permits are going to be substantial on this project with all the work along the bank and in the shoreline. So that is the, really the, the priority right now is to get all the feedback we, we need so we can be on the same page with people to submit for permits going into spring of The next project I'm going to talk a little bit about is the Milwaukee Two Levee. So this is, this was one of the areas where in February of 2022, the river came up as well as right along the point at Signature Point, where the river came up very high, close to the top of the bank. So they definitely gave us emergency in getting these things moving. This is at 259th Street and Terry did show a picture where we're looking to put in a separated trail going under the Union Pacific Railroad tracks. So here's a concept of the, of the project as we move forward. This would include relocating south 259th Street away from the river and putting in some salmon habitat along the bank. So a pretty substantial salmon habitat area, which will also provide additional floodplain storage and allow the levee to be more secure. And then the levee, all of these projects will provide 500-year protection plus three feet of freeboard along the river. And then also I can see the orange line is a separated trail, which would tie into the Horseshoe Bend Trail. So this is another area where pedestrians and motorists share the road for this area from the interurban trail over to the east end of this project. And so that's another improvement. So very multi-beneficial. Every project that we're working on with the Flood District is multi-beneficial. The next two things I'm going to talk about are flood damage repairs. And so these are things that we're watching very closely. This is just upstream of the Milwaukee Two Levee. This is called the McCoy Levee. Excuse me. And you can see this, these were areas that were, the McCoy Levee, as well as the next one I'm going to talk about, Desamoni, were damaged during the February 2020 significant event. And you can see where there's kind of a divot here, where the levee has failed. That's where the, the riverbank is no longer secure, which is, which is the levee. So the Corps of Engineers in King County are working on a, a repair project, which consists mostly of incorporating the city's backup levee, which we built approximately 10 years ago with funding from the state. So this was something when we started doing our accreditation studies, our accreditation consultant said, yeah, that levee is, it doesn't meet federal standards. You can't use that. So we were able to get the funding from the state to build the setback levee and it is coming. And so consequently, at this point, the city is secure even regardless of this. The majority of the work related to the repair project will be a ring dyke around the Puget Sound Energy Gas Regulating Station right along Eightieth Avenue. And then the King County will take over maintenance of the levee built by the city. And this is just another picture and you can see the gas regulating station for P S E with the, the old levee in front of it and then the new levee, newer levee behind it. The Desamoni Levee is at the north end and just outside the city, in the city of Takwila. However, it is a kind of an isolated area of Takwila that if, if there is a problem with this levee, it would, the water would come into Kent. So it is a big priority for us. And this picture that we've shown before is the area where, one of the areas where the damage occurred. This picture on the right side is along this yellow area. So there was, there was damage along quite a bit of this yellow area and the, the county and the Corps of Engineers in the city of Takwila are working forward to, looking to fund a repair that would incur, that would include virtually all of the area from, between the two green areas that the city already did work on previously. So the city repaired the outside bends, the next project that would be coming up. And it would be another expensive project that would be paid for partially by the Core, but mostly by the King County Flood Control District. But that would, when that's done, that would take care of the damage as well as 500-year protection all the way through this reach. And this is just another picture of the levee erosion in this area. So there was, there was a lot of slumping in this area from the, the high water pulling the levee down after it was saturated. The Lower Green River Flood Hazard Management Plan, we just had an update on this also at the Salmon Habitat Forum last Thursday. So the, the updated news on this is that there's going to be a new comment period starting December 1st through January 14th. There will be a couple of public meetings coming up as part of that. So we'll be watching for those. First one's January 6th. And then following that, they'll be doing alternatives analysis, going through the environmental impact statement process. And then following all of the public process, go to Flood Control District Board Adoption and Implementation. And like I mentioned, this is, this is very significant for us, for the city, because the timeline for it, the forecast is that these projects and the methods and the way the levees are going to be handled in conjunction with recreation and salmon habitat and people will be in place for a long, long time. And Mayor Ralph has been sitting on the Executive Committee for the Flood Hazard Management Plan, guiding the, the formation of the alternatives that are going to be coming out to the public here very shortly. FEMA, I'll just talk about this very, very briefly. And related to levee accreditation, one of the things that I, the thing that I would just say is that all of the levee pieces that need improvements in order to be accredited by FEMA are actively being worked on. So the ones that I mentioned, Desamoni, Lower Russell, Signature Point, Milwaukee Two, all of those are, those are the last pieces that need to be brought up to federal standards. And all of those have funding moving towards them and people actively working on those. The U S Geological Service, so I'll be, I have, there's some symbols showing we have the three gauges. This is the same as last year. We have three gauges within the city, which provides us some good information, live information about how the river is doing at different points. So we can focus our efforts and on where to send flood patrols, where to look and, and so just making us more efficient. One of the things that, and this is, and I've talked about this previously also, following the, or during the February 2020 storm event, the USGS calibrated the gauge in Auburn. And I've got a little pointer there, the gauge in Auburn is just near the Eighth Street Bridge. And it is used to, it dictates how much water the Corps of Engineers can, can let out. That's where their target is, is 12,000 cubic. That's where their target is, is 12,000 cubic feet per second at the Auburn Gauge. So what changed during that calibration was, previously, and this is for 50 years plus, the 12,000 cubic feet per second elevation at that gauge was about 67.0. Following the calibration, it was 67.8. So when the Corps targets 12,000 cubic feet per second, that results in, now it results in an extra eight tenths of a foot of elevation of water. So that is something, that's significant for us, but it is something that we're working with them on to respond to and to be prepared for. So here are some of the things that we've done in response to that. And a lot of communication is going on between the Corps of Engineers and King County, improved communication. So it's given us an opportunity to really take a hard look at, and making sure that our communication during high-flow events is happening between the right people and happening quickly. And then the USGS has committed to reevaluating that calibration during the next high flow. They have to wait for the water to come up above 9,000 CFS, however, to be able to reevaluate that, because that's where the calibration was changed, was above 9,000. So the river was at 7,000 this last weekend, as I mentioned, so not quite high enough. So we know we're going to have to deal with it at least one more time, so we want to just be able to be prepared for that. The city has stockpiled some floodfighting materials, some HESCO sand, kind of structured flood barriers that we've gotten from the Corps of Engineers borrowed, as well as some materials that we've gotten just on our own. We've added some staff gauges for our own staff to take a look at, and I've got a picture of one there in the lower right. So those are tied into actual river elevation, so once people are out checking the river, they can check the actual elevation of the water without having to do any kind of translation. And then we've put in a couple levee cameras additional, and this is one on the top right. This is Washington Avenue in the background. So this is right where the high water was during February of 2020, so we've got a live camera able to watch that and see the water. Okay. So going into this winter, I'll talk about some of the ocean conditions and what we're looking at. So just a very, very short briefing on the ocean conditions. So what really influences the water or the weather patterns in the Pacific Northwest and the entire West Coast during the winter is the temperature in the ocean at the equator in the Pacific. So this year, and you see the blue, temperature's a little bit below normal. So what that means is the jet stream gets pushed a little bit further north. When the water at the equator is warmer than normal, the jet stream tends to go further south. Then it brings water, the more the rain down to California area. This year with the La Niña, that they call it, we're looking at a wetter, potential for a wetter, colder winter. We've already seen the wetter part, starting, the rainfall that we've gotten since the beginning of October has been about double of what it normally is. So a very significant amount of rainfall just in the last six weeks. And these are the NOAA climate outlooks, and this just follows right along with what I just mentioned. Higher chance of above-average precipitation up in the Pacific Northwest, drier down in the Southwest, and then higher chance of below-average temperatures up in the Pacific Northwest with warmer temperatures for most of the rest of the country. So beyond that, just some of the things that we've done for flood season preparations, our operations crews have done their, just some drills. These are the HESCOs that I mentioned, that were the Corps of Engineers loaned to us. They've got a metal cage, just with a liner, and you use a backhoe and a dump truck or some other type of material, equipment to fill those up. So they're very sturdy, and they can be very narrow. And then we also have two sandbag-making machines that our crews have practiced on so that they're ready and ready to go. And the Corps of Engineers did help us, because there are certain ways to build sandbags, sandbag walls, just to make sure that they're as leak-proof as they can possibly be. We also practice, just in case somebody's in the river, practice being able to get them out, as well as have safety training for all of our levee patrol teams. The map here in the, towards the left, the center-left, kind of illustrates how we can monitor the river. So the little triangles are the USGS gauges from the Auburn Gauge. There's four of them, kind of equally spaced. And then we have the cameras, four of those. The fourth one at the Milwaukee II Levee is in the process of being installed. The other three are already in. And then these other little symbols are the areas where we've put the gauges on the bridge abutments, so our flood patrols can quickly be able to tell what the elevation of the river is at each point. So we've got a very good network of ways that we can monitor the river. Now, a lot, very improved over the way it's been in the past. And then the picture on the left is from the 277th Camera of the Green River. And then on the right is just things that we look for, looking for log jams in the river, which may hang up material, or issues with levees. Regionally, we also are very well coordinated with other groups, continuing to work with the Flood District and the Corps on Levee Repairs, as I mentioned, coordinating with the federal agencies, attending meetings with them to make sure we're all on the same page. These are all things I've already talked about, annual trainings and procuring flood barriers. King County does, the Flood Control District does a significant outreach also regarding flood alerts, and they have a very good flood warning app available on their website. Going into endangered species, the Salmon Habitat Plan for 2021 was adopted by the city, as well as other cities this year. So updated policies as well as restoration projects, so I'll talk about just a few of those. The big one, Downey-Farmstead Side Channel. This is one that has been in process for a long time, has had regional support this whole way, and now we are at the point where we've got the funding coming to be able to complete the construction in 2022. So very exciting piece. This is, this picture is from this year. So we did some additional construction this year using funding from the Flood Control District to expand the channel a little bit more, and the next year will be, and this is just another picture of some of the excavation, and just like Lower Russell, these are some really big pieces of machinery. The channel is going to be about the same width as the river itself, and we'll be able to provide a significant amount of habitat, some multiple side channels coming in at different elevations. So depending on where the river is, the salmon will be able to use that. Also, a lot of floodplain storage to allow the river to lower just a bit because of all the quantity of storage, up to six inches at the upstream end of the project. And that benefit will carry upstream all the way into Auburn. It'll taper off, but, so it carries up miles upstream for the flood benefit of this. And then some future projects. These are, the map on the right are all the projects that are in the Salmon Habitat Plan in the city. So these are all, all the kind of the pink ones going all the way downstream. There's quite a chain of future projects to be done along the river. A lot of the colored ones have been done or in progress. We have the Lower Russell Habitat Area A, which was unable to be funded, is right at the north end of the Lower Russell Project. And then Lower Mill Creek down in Auburn. And then Veterans Drive Floodplain, which is the large pond on the other side of Lower Russell. And then some work habitat at Johnson Creek, which is in the 212th Street area, right along the Green River. And then the Boeing Levee is right along the other side of that. Those are just some of the bigger ones. But like I mentioned on here, there's, there are a lot of projects that still have to do, so a lot of, a lot of things to be able to continue to do to improve the habitat in the river. And that is my presentation, and I would love to answer any questions.
Well, thank you for joining us tonight. Lots of good information. Anyone have any questions or comments? Well, I'm just crossing my fingers. When I saw the map of the rain and then the cold weather, I'm really hoping that it's a mild winter, but we will see. So.
Your staff, your city staff, spent a lot of time getting ready for whatever shows up. Operations staff have been very busy on all of our internal flooding that we've had the last couple of days. As Mike said, we've had about double the amount of rain we typically would get, so they've really been doing a great job of keeping up on that. The river's been doing great, and the operation of the dam's been fine, so we're not concerned there right now, but it is one of the things we stay concerned with, so hopefully no one else has to worry about it. Love having Mike on board and taking care of this stuff. He's the man, and then we've got a whole army of folks that are working behind the scenes, working with him on it.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. I do want to say thank you to Mike. He is the regional, probably statewide, expert when it comes to Green River levees, flooding, habitat, all of those things, and the ability to find the multi-benefit in all of our projects. Mike is the go-to around the region, and we are super lucky that he calls Kent home for all of this work. So thank you so much, Mike. And then I do want to take a quick chance, Chad, you mentioned it, to point out the amount of work on the internal flooding, not the Green River flooding that's been going on for the last, as a result of this rain. Our crews have been working around the clock and doing everything they can to make sure that our residents are staying safe through this, and just want to say a big thank you to all of them.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Well, thank you again, Mike, for joining us. Thank you, Chad, for stepping up here. That brings us to the end of our workshop this evening. Council will take a little break, and we will come back for the council meeting at 7:00. So thank you again. We are adjourned.